Here we are, tunnel meeting number 100. We made it. I'm very proud of all of you. Um, it's June 4th, 2024. And today, we're being joined by Judith, Fanny, Colly, Duke Peter, S A, Hogan, Martin, O A P, Sugar and Spice, Walter, William and Billy, or both Billies or both Williams, and Zelfred, and Fotogee is also joining in from the waiting room. Thanks all for being here. As you can see on, on screen, a little outline of today's agenda. We started with a couple of mentions, and then we go to S A for an invite to the African Guild. After that, we go to Duke Peter for a call out on inclusivity research. And then there's two topics, semi bigger topics. One being, um, work group lead call. It's, uh, I feel it's getting time to, to start that, to start having that. So far, we, we don't have a dedicated work group lead call. Uh, but more on that later. And some updates on the quarterly budget procedures. We had a governance, uh, work group, uh, meeting earlier today, that resulted in, yeah, some, some updates to the process, which I'd like to share. Then after that, if there's any time left on the clock, um, there's space for open topics. Then a quick reminder on what the ambassador program even is and what we do. Basically, it's a program open to anybody that is aligned with the Singularity Net's mission and vision. And we have a wide variety of self-organizing work groups. I think about fourteen, fifteen right now, uh, something like this, and yeah, if you want to contribute in any way, we do have a fitting work group, very likely, um. And you're welcome to. So do up onto our Discord server. You'll find a Getting Started channel there, which will get you started. Alright, then on to some mentions. Um, on deep funding, round four, the vote is about to start. Uh, this is on June 10th, I believe, 12 UTC. And perhaps anybody in the room knows if this week there will be a town hall? Quickly checking.
Yes, yes, there will be a town hall. There will be a town hall. It will just be a very quick one where we go over the, um, let me try and remember, I think just the voting procedure. Um, yeah, it's just a, it's a drop-in session.
Okay, cool.
I think we had three community, three community sessions last week, so we're gonna take it easy this week.
Yes. Yeah, tons of content. I wasn't able to, uh, attend all of it. Uh, it's just crazy. I think 192, um, proposals are, well, will be up for votes. It's just crazy. In an awesome way, of course. Uh, so then the tunnel will be at, uh, Thursday 18 UTC for deep funding. Um, yeah, then a quick shout out to, um, the ASI merger. Um, this will take place on June 13th. I figured I'd, uh, touch on that as well. Uh, it's a big topic, way bigger than just a quick shout out, um. But something to note is that, um, basically if your tokens are on an exchange, you don't really have to do anything. It will be automatic. If they're not in an exchange but in your wallet, um, you will have a lot of time, as in multiple years, to take action. So it's not something to stress about, um, but it is happening. And yeah, that will be, uh, next week, Thursday. Then, um, yeah, on the Marketing Guild's, uh, lead position, um, during last tunnel, last week, uh, we planned the session on Friday, so past Friday. However, it turned out was too low in a way, um, so during the start of that call, it was decided to postpone and hopefully find a better slot where, I don't know exactly how many people showed interest in potentially leading the Marketing Guild, um, but it was a lot of people, so hopes were that, uh, at least a little bit of those people, um, or more of those people would be, um, present in a session. So we'll need to pick a new date for that. Um, Judith, anything from your side on this?
Well, did you tag them all? Like, did you tag them and ask them to be part of the session or how, how did the whole thing work?
Quickly check. I think it was, uh, generic post in Marketing Guilds. Uh, but yeah, residual tagging would be, yeah, noted.
Yeah, I can, um, send a new list where, I mean, I can put a post with everyone that has indicated interest, so you all have them in one place. And then, but in terms of the picking the new marketing lead guild, I mean, there's not much that I'm gonna be doing. It's either the people that are interested should figure it out among themselves or it should be a core contributor vote. I don't know.
Yeah, makes sense. Well, there's still some, some outstanding topics, let's say. Um, fortunately, I was hoping there would be a bit of asynchronous discussion taking place. There was some, uh, thanks for those that, that did post, um. But again, with a relatively long list of interested people, uh, I feel, yeah, there was potential for more discussion at least, um, so the idea was to have that in the session and that then didn't take place. So yeah, that's the current state.
I guess the best thing would be to figure out the new session and then, yeah, I, I don't, I don't know how to decide on how to even pick the process. I thought that's what the voting software would probably be most useful for.
Good point, um.
Because I don't think anyone has decided if they should just drop a resume or if they should do some kind of interviews or whatever process. Like, seems like we're stuck on the process to begin with before we can even vote for someone.
No, fair to. Um, well, the intention of having that session was to sort the topic, um, and decide that.
Okay, so while we had, I dropped the, the different options that were figured out in the town hall. They were in the Marketing Guild chat and I think you can just put that in the decision-making software and then should be easy enough, hopefully.
Yes, um. Sounds like a decent plan at least. If it doesn't, uh, work out for whatever reason, there will be follow-up, but.
Yeah, I, I don't know if I can help that much with it.
No, fair, noted.
Since it's not my decision alone.
No, fair to. Uh, that's the same as felt during, uh, at the start of the call, we had, uh, four or five, uh, people joining. It's like, yeah, this is a small group to make this decision.
Then again, the people that are not joining, then they maybe shouldn't be eligible. Maybe you should just pick between the five that were joining. And I'm sure.
I, I did, Walter mentioned this in the, in the chat as well. Just a little overview of those that were active, um. Not so much of, also with disclaimers on it being contributions, not participation, but just some statistics on the, on the chat activity, for example.
Yeah.
Which is an interesting angle. Alright. Um. Yeah, that's coverage for now, I believe. Uh, well, quick check, is there any questions in the room? Alright, um, then moving on to S A on the African Guild. The floor is yours.
Hi, everyone. Um, hi, Peter. I can't believe that we're up to, we're doing the hundred, uh, hundred Ambassador's Town Hall. That's a lot. Congratulations. Um, I just want to, um, invite everyone, um, all the Africans and the ambassadors, um, um, community to join us as we, uh, expand, um, Singularity Net and footprint in Africa. So the African Guild is now live and we are calling every single one of you to join us. We are having, um, our meeting on Thursday. So during this meeting, we are going to get to know ourselves better and to know, um, how we are going to be contributing. Like, everybody, we're going to be talking about our strengths and what we hope to contribute in ensuring that, uh, this African Guild grows into every, um, known territory in Africa and cover as much, um, location as we can together as a community, um. Um, so watch out for the, um, link. We'll be dropping the link on Thursday in the, um, before Thursday, in the Ambassador's, um, channel. So, um, the meets will be holding on Thursday by 3:00 PM UTC, that's 4:00 PM Nigerian time. I think it's 3:00 PM UTC for Ghana, because Ghana uses, um, UTC. Um, so all of you are welcome to join and thank you so much for the support we've gotten so far. And we hope to, you know, do great things. Yeah, thank you.
And thank you. Uh, I'll add it, uh, to the calendar right away. So just to confirm, it's, uh, 15 UTC, June 13th.
No, this, this, this Thursday, that's, um, June 6th.
Got it. For some reason, it was set to next week. Um, okay. That will be on Discord then?
No, it's on Zoom. We are having it on Zoom, yeah, yeah.
Perfect.
So, um, Duke will be dropping the, uh, meeting link on the Ambassador's channel. Um, 3:00 PM UTC, that's 4:00 PM Nigerian time, Colly, Colly, try me.
Alright, good stuff. Um. Well, question in chat. South East Asia.
Oh.
What about that? Are they welcome? Is everybody welcome or is it exclusive?
Uh, everybody's welcome, but, uh, I, I don't know, because, um, the target is Africa, right? So everybody's welcome, but, um, yeah, we can see how we can grow together. So yeah, you can be apart and we can actually, you see how we can even, you know, maybe movie, move like, um, have like African Guild and Asian Guild, something like that. We're fine there.
Alright, perfect. Um, you have to, there's any questions on the topic? Before moving on, then that would be the time to raise your hand or simply unmute and ask. And we can only conclude it was very clear. Um. Colly, I have no clue what CST means, but if it's.
Is this Central Standard Time? Well.
I did put it at the correct slot, so yes, it's right. Oh, S A, I'm well aware. Alright, I think it's correct on the, on the calendar, but, uh, let's double check and if it's not, we'll adjust.
I, I think, uh, you know, CST is different. We're using UTC, so, uh, maybe showing CST because of this person's time zone. So he might want to check, uh, cross-check. I think we use UTC, right?
Yeah, the universal part makes it, uh, useful for like a global context.
Okay.
Alright.
So that's 15 UTC, that's 3:00 PM UTC. Alright, thank you and see you all on Thursday.
Perfect. Thank you. And then, uh, well, as you can see on screen, hardly a surprise what's coming up next, uh, that would be Duke Peter on his inclusivity research initiative. The floor is yours.
Hey, people. Morning, good afternoon, good evening. Please confirm you can hear me. Yep, alright, so, um, I'll be doing a quick one on the, um, inclusivity research, but um, before I jump on that, I'll be leaving a, a link to the skilled database, um, skilled database form for, um, the African Guild, right? So, um, Africans who are interested in being a part of it, um, you could just, um, fill the skilled database form. It just lets us have some insights, you know, into you and your professional capabilities. And, um, of course, it's open to everyone and, um, especially if you're looking at naturalizing as an African or you're looking at getting married from Africa. I mean, it's just a, it's like a joke by the side though. Yep, um, about the, um, inclusivity. So yeah, we're conducting a research. Um, and a few persons are conducting a research for, um, inclusivity of people with, um, disability in the Singularity Net ecosystem. Um, we do know that we are, um, we, uh, the, the SNET ecosystem promotes inclusivity a lot and, um, decentralization. However, we have observed over time that there may be some people who feel, um, excluded, right, from some of the things that we do here, you know, um. Most of our communication is done, um, um, through audiovisual technology. And there may be some people who are probably dyslexic or just face one form of disability or the other. And, um, we are on a mission to identify the prevalence, um, disabilities that are existent in the ecosystem. And beyond just identifying them, um, um, finding out possible solutions that can be implemented to help these, these sets of people feel more included and feel more, um, like a part of the ecosystem. Personally, I know about two people who find it difficult being a part of our meetings, uh, even though they want to, you know, engage with us as holistically as possible, but find it really difficult being a part of our meetings, you know, for reasons owing to disabilities. And there may be more people like that. Um, when we brought this up in the R and D team, it was obvious that there were more people like that. So we, we intend to expand this research to the Ambassador Program, to the Deep Funding Program, you know, all across, um, um, the SNET ecosystem. So, um, yeah, I, I think, let me drop a link to that. We invite everyone. I mean, if you have any form, and I mean, it could be something as serious as, um, as something to do with your eyesight, maybe blindness or deafness. It could just be something as serious as that or something. And I don't mean to downplay or exaggerate the, the effect of any form of disability. Or it could just be some other thing like dyslexia or autism or just whatever. We just want to know, you know, feel the pulse of the community and know, you know, um, the, the problems that we are, um, 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 the problem that members of the community are facing with respect to inclusivity. So I'll be leaving the link in the chat. Feel free to jump on it. And then, um, a member of our research team, um, that's, uh, Oyeka would be reaching out to Guild Leads, you know, um, Guild Leads here. We would like to implore that you let us, you know, have access to your guilds, you know, so that, you know, we could just, you know, um, spread the word. We're, we're conducting surveys now and members of your guilds and, you know, filling the survey form. If you have any question, I see a hand up, please feel free to ask while I try to fetch the.
Uh, Lilo, feel free to.
Yeah.
Now.
Um, oh. Um, so I, I just opened up the, uh, survey and I noticed on the, the first, like, multiple choice question, I just wanted to give like some feedback that I think that this needs to be, um, yeah, that you should be able to select multiple, um, as somebody who has multiple chronic illnesses, like, I mean, I guess there's the other option and you can like list it, but it's a, could be a thing, just so that you can select multiple of the ones that are already listed as well. Could it be an option?
And also noting in, uh, chat, um, oh, also, I need to say recognizing it, um, the form is currently asking for an email address and it's being wondered how required this would be.
Um. Okay, can you guys hear me, please?
Yes.
Okay, um, I'm trying to pull up the form on my end, but it's not loading up. Can you confirm that the email address is not at the top of the form? It should be at the base. So, um, we figure that there may be people because that's part of our survey and, um, we would have to conduct interviews, you know, with a few persons who maybe, who would be open to that. Maybe just a handful of, of about five persons would like to, you know, interact more personally with, you know, um, members who, um, um, are open to being interviewed. Okay, if the, if the email is at the top, we apologize for that. We'll take it out. It's not, we, we, we would like you to be as expressive as possible while, uh, honoring and respecting your privacy and anonymity, right? The emails we're expected to collect or we intend on collecting is just for those who are interested in the interviews, so that we could, um, send you the interview link and then, um, we could schedule an interview with you and talk more personally with you. So for, um, the, the emails at the top, please discard that. Um, I'm pretty sure that a member of the team is working on that as I speak now to take that out. Just in case there's anyone who's interested in feeling that right now as we speak, that should be worked on as I speak right now. So discard that, please.
Yeah, based on the chat, it looks like, uh, it shouldn't be long before that started. Nice and very commendable initiative, uh, if I may say so, that's, uh, yeah. Uh, it's also called in, out in chat, there's, there's taboos in place here and yeah, in my mind, anywhere where there's a taboo, it's generally, like 99%, it's a good thing to get rid of it. Um, so yeah, great stuff, um. See some more praise in chat. Um, would be any questions or comments perhaps?
Yeah, thank you, Vani. And everyone is welcome to contribute to the, to, um, to the, to the documents, please. Any questions? I'd, 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 I'd be delighted to take any questions, anybody.
And just to make sure, um, if people want to reach out about this, then the R and D channel is the place or should that they am you or?
Yeah, so the R and D channel is a good place to go, but you could also send me a DM. Um, I'm working on this project with, um, 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 Lotizi, Oyeka and Onizzi. So whoever you could get across to first, right, but then for a more public, um, um, would I call it, for just anything public, you could go to the R and D channel.
Alright, um, yeah, just for complete completeness sake, I also answered the question in chat with your, uh, your Discord handle. Alright. Anybody in the room? Any thoughts, questions? Alright.
And, okay, so just the final thing, um, so because we are talking on disability, there is a likelihood that a couple of people who may be experiencing this may not be on this call. So maybe if you know anyone, right, who is experiencing this or could be experiencing this, you may just extend a hand and, you know, send a link to the person and let them know oh, we're now working on something that, um, has their best interest in mind. Yeah, just, uh, thank you.
Cool. Oh, and I see in chat, uh, the email is, uh, removed from the form, so good stuff. Thanks a lot. Then, uh, moving on to the next slide, um, for two more topics, um, first one being, um, well, you can all read, um, it, it's about, um, the work group, uh, leads having a potentially bi-weekly call. Uh, this was triggered by, um, yesterday's Strategy Guild call. And yeah, it's been a dormant need in a way to, to have some kind of work group lead, uh, call. And then Billy yesterday during Strategy Guild was kind of somewhat asking for similar stuff. Um, so I figured, let's get a bit of a temperature check on the, there's, there's quite some work group leads in the room, uh, right now. Um. Basically want to figure out, um, how to go about it. Um, would you mind a bi-weekly call with other, uh, work group leads? So if something you completely would not like, for example, I would also, um, like to hear that. Um. Yeah, perhaps Billy, if you, if you don't mind, uh, me putting you on the spot, because that's what it is right now. Um, perhaps you could, uh, give a bit of a background from Strategy Guild's, uh, perspective, what, what you're looking for?
Yeah, thank, thank you very much. Um. Generally, it's opening up communication between the guilds so that we can meet the needs and wants of each of these distinct groups. Because this is a, uh, decentralized entity and each of these groups all work on their own. There should be, you, I'm gonna give you a term and, and I'm gonna, decentralized ecosystem. Okay, neither one of those works with each other. If we have an ecosystem, it's got to be able to cross-pollinate and it's got to be able to work together to survive. Otherwise, you don't have an ecosystem, you have a, an independent garden that isn't going to be able to thrive because all the other things that it needs to be able to move forward aren't going to be able to move forward. I would like to be able to have all the leads participate in the Strategy Guild. However, yeah, Peter was talking about perhaps a bi-weekly meeting with just in a, uh, work group lead uh, aspect. It didn't have to be within the Strategy Guild. But at least that way, again, it's about communication between the different groups, what they're doing and how they might be able to help each other. As for the Strategy Guild, I, I was suggesting that because there are so many different work groups here, that it might be best to stagger the meetings weekly base, on a weekly basis, having a first group take part within the meeting, half, half of the leads and the following week, the second half. And before we began the second meeting, we would use the notes from the first meeting to inform everybody on these, these new leads present that was discussed at the previous meeting and what those needs might be that are that the people here today could be able to help with. So it would, it would be constantly informing each group as you move from week through week through week. And you wouldn't have 16 people trying to get their ideas across at one time. You'd maybe have eight people working together. The idea then would be to set up an agenda prior to the meeting so that we knew what everybody wanted to cover so that we could stay within a certain timeframe. And that agenda would be stuck through as we go, as we, the meetings would be carried out. I'm hoping that I can have the leads participate. If they don't specifically want to participate, then I would hope that they could put a representative from each of their guilds or groups that could act as their eyes and ears and their voice in passing the message along of how we could help their individual group achieve the goals they want to achieve. That's the general outline of it, if that's okay, Peter.
It is, it does give a clear overview. Um. Yeah, preferably I would hear from some, uh, work group leads what they feel about this. We have some in the room. I'm not gonna call you out, but, uh, feel free to speak up.
Hey, Pete, hey, hey, Billy. So yeah, I think I was called to action, um. We discussed today in the, in the governance, uh, workshop, we did retrospective of, uh, Treasury Second Quarter Procedure. I think that the, the topic came out and I think uh, um, I think Kenichi have been working on the idea of a, of a lead work group uh, meeting. Um, of course, it's a strategy topic. Uh, but it is more of a communication topic. What, what will be the objective of a meeting is to communicating, updating, um, because, for example, the problem we have on treasury, uh, I'm, I'm not a problem, the process we are building and it's optimizing every time, we will do it with a better communication. So it would be a, a place for communication, uh, um, and, but it is indeed a strategic need for the ambassadors to work with fluent operation. Um, and, but yeah, sadly, so um, yeah, that's my take, uh, I don't, so if we make the strategy guild a place for D reps from each work group uh, to communicate and update and have trace a roadmap for better functionality. Um, yeah, it would be like a round table for, for leads, but at the end, anyone could represent. Um, at the end, it will be a time slot on the calendar for this to happen. Probably bi-weekly, maybe three-weekly, I don't know if that's a word. Yeah, um, probably a monthly, like we do, like we, because what we realize is that the town halls, uh, work groups update is an update, it's not an operational like, um, moment to discuss present problems at the real time. Um, but I, I do, I, I, I mentioned this to, to Kenichi a couple of weeks ago with his initiative. Uh, yeah, I, I really like the idea and we discussed this today. It's totally needed, it, we are placed for having a more fluent communication, um, whatever the time slot turns into a sched- schedule or calendar, yeah, definitely something we, we must do.
Alright, thanks a lot for that. Anybody else? I see some chat participation, can I entice you to uh, put it into words? As in audio?
Hello, everyone.
Oh, yes, go for it.
Yeah, so uh, I wanted to ask, um, first of all, before making my comment, um, I'm, I'm all for the work group leads meeting together, you know, strategizing and how we could move our ambassador program forward. Well, I wanted to know if this is going to be different from what the strategy guild will be doing? Or did they want us to, um, do they want us to join from time to time or it's, it's going to something meshed? I, I wanted to understand. Um, Billy?
I think the intention is for sure to have, um, as much people join as possible, uh, just to enable that communication. And I think that's where the key is, that, that communication. Um, I'd like to, uh, something I mentioned in chat as well, um, because we didn't have strategy guild for a while now and it's been revived. Uh, but I, yeah, we'd just like to point out that, um, the earlier iteration, let's say, uh, that used to work on specific topics or issues which emerged, uh, rather than having a, a check-in space for seeing if there is potential topics um, that might need figuring out. Um, so that's also Billy for a bit of context, that's, that's why, um, with, in the back of mind, having this need for a work group lead meeting, whatever the frequency is, I put bi-weekly on the sheet. Uh, I see people arguing for a monthly and I, I think that's in light of, there's just a ton of meetings. Um, so yeah, wanted to add that for a little bit of context. Now go for it.
Um, so great question, uh, Sukran, uh, thank you very much, Guillermo. Um, actually, the idea of, I don't know if we can get everybody wrangled in the same place at the same time on a monthly basis. If we did a, a bi-weekly where we had half the leads every other week, then it would be basically a monthly meeting for those in the first half and then similar in the second half. And that way, we could look at the material that is being brought forward to us in the strategy guild and work on helping with those uh, those decisions, those needs, those wants during that time in between each of them. I don't know if that makes any more sense to you? To like a bi-weekly meeting.
Yeah, go on, go on.
So the, the idea behind the bi-weekly would be just so that we could space it out, number one. But we'd like to be able to get everybody in at least once a month. But having everybody in, we have sixteen guilds and workgroups currently. So having eight people in at a time would make a lot more sense. So we'd be able to focus specifically on the needs of, of this group, these groups at this time. And then we, in two weeks, we could follow that up with the communication with the other half. But in the interim, the strategy guild will still have its regular Monday meetings to see what we've done to help out, meet the needs and requests from the various groups and guilds. So that there is open communication with everybody.
Alright, Billy, I understand. Yeah, thank you. So, um, just like, just like Peter had said, um, in the chat, yeah, I think it's to be something um, where we ask strategy for help if there's a need and then of course having to, um, bring like a group every single time. And it's, of course, um, we used to have like the ambassadors, um, meeting and all the ambassadors then where work group leads. And it went on great, uh, I think we stopped that because, um, a few persons couldn't meet up for the time and we had just reduced attendance. So, well, if, if it's something that we'll, we'll come together to discuss once, uh, once a month or bi-weekly, that's fine by me.
Thank you.
And then, um, Vanessa being in a noisy room, I'll, uh, I, I would do like to call out, um, chat messages. Um, that would be on, um, uh, well, Vanessa, sorry, to try to not put words into your mouth. Uh, I'd say it shouldn't be run from strategy guild particularly because strategy guild is a guild in its own, uh, in its own right. So that would make whoever leads strategy guild effectively the boss of the entire program, um, which isn't awfully decentralized. Uh, so this initiative should be go-lad, uh, by everyone, which, well, I'll, I'll let you answer that, but um, I, I don't think you have any intention of power grabbing here, but um, yeah. Any thoughts on that?
My intention is to help here. It's not about a power grab for anybody. It's to help the communication between the guilds, help them achieve what they would like to achieve and keep communication, uh, simple and true. I have, I have no wish for anything out of anybody here. I'm just trying to help the system coordinate. And that's exactly what I do. If you have, you, I understand what you just said there. You already have a situation where all the leads lead their own groups. And it hasn't come together yet. The idea has been there in the past to bring everybody together to coordinate together, to help each other. And that's the main goal of this. If you, if you're a dead set against the strategy being the, the area for it, then perhaps another meeting room could be set up specifically for the leads and that somebody from the strategy guild could just attend and listen and participate. There's, there's no power grab going on here. I don't want to, I, I, I don't.
I don't think the intention was to accuse you of this. Um, it's just, well, also for a bit of context, um, maybe not everybody uh, is aware, but also what God mentioned earlier, we used to have an ambassador only, um, both meeting and channel. And the channel was not visible for, um, well, people without the ambassador role. And this, by definition, even though it's just, if there's nothing happening, yeah, there was nothing special happening there. Uh, but just the, the whole error of it creates this, this potential, yeah, hierarchy stuff going on. So I think that's also a bit of the context, um, to these remarks. I don't think it's intended as a accusation of a power grab, um, yeah.
Okay, but it, 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 going back to the, the idea of the the position, the, I, I get that you have, everybody wants to lead. So everybody can be a leader and I appreciate that. But there still has to be a moderator that's coordinating the discussion so that it stays on point and it doesn't move off back and forth and we're not getting things accomplished. This is something that I've been driven into me since I've been here. If it's not a deliverable, then it's not helping. So I, I agree, all the leads are still their, their leads, there, there, nothing has changed there. The only difference is I'd like to see a moderator moderating the conversations that take on, take place between the leads so that it is organized and not just the Wild West.
Yes, that makes a lot of sense. Uh, there's a suggestion in the chat on, um, rotating meeting facilitation, which sounds on the surface at least like it would be a great solution, I'm not sure. Yeah, I don't see much downsides there, to be honest.
No, I, I like the idea of a rotating mediator or moderator. Uh, I think it's a great idea. It would allow everybody to, uh, gain a chance to, to sit. But what we should make sure though is that as the new lead takes over during the next session, that the person that led last week provides them with everything that they have up to date so that the new lead isn't starting off fresh again. They have their, the, the processes always in a continuous forward motion. So that's the important part of having alternative leads take over all the time. I, I really like that idea and I, every, in every job I've ever had, I've had to teach everybody what to do in case I couldn't show up to the job. Whether that was running a truck, running the well, leading a crew, understanding a process. I wanted everybody to know everything I knew. And I would hope that that's sort of a goal here as well. Is that everybody would like to be able to help out and participate with each other and building something that's for the long term. That's my two cents there.
Alright, I do think, uh, can't speak for everybody, but I do think about ninety-nine percent of the room agrees with, uh, these latter remarks. Uh, which is why we're here, right, uh, in the end? Um, alright, um, looking at the clock, I, I do want to give space to other people to contribute to the, um, to the topic, so please raise your hand if you have any. Um, I'll quickly call out Vanessa's suggestion, uh, for Q three to maybe have some cross-workgroup, um, budget. Um, just so that this facilitation and mentorship and stuff is, yeah, um, covered for. I do think that's a great idea personally, uh, worst case scenario, we don't use it. Um, best case scenario, we can have rotating facilitation which is compensated. So maybe somebody has an argument against it, but yeah, that, to me, it looks great to have some kind of cross-workgroup, um, budget for Q three. And it is a nice bridge to the last topic of today and looking at the clock, I do think it's time to go there. But I do want to quick check if somebody wants to comment on the previous still. Uh, this is not, well, it sounds to me like not a finalized topic, like this needs to be hashed out further. Um, but yeah. Like, nobody raising hands, so I'll assume.
Uh, Peter, sorry.
Yeah, go for it.
Uh, I just wanted to mention the document that we put into the, uh, um, the forum for the leads to, uh, put in their names for their participation and if they're going to set a representative, to perhaps put a representative in there to participate so that, uh, we know who to reach out to and communicate with, when letting them know ahead of time what's going on with their meeting or if we send up, set up an agenda ahead of time for the meeting that they're able to review it. So when they're coming in there, they're fully aware of what's going on. So if any, if everybody could participate in completing their specific information in that document, that would be great. Peter created it yesterday and I posted it in the forum last night. Sorry, thank you very much.
And thank you, um, this is, uh, well, this is a topic that's long overdue in a way, so yeah. Thanks. Um, yeah, then four minutes on the clock. It somehow keeps getting less and less, it's a weird concept. Uh, moving on to quarterly budget procedure. Because, um, during governance, uh, governance guild call, we had, uh, yeah, a bit of discussion and, and review of the past quarterly budgets. Um, stuff and how it worked out and what went well and what should be improved. And yeah, that came with some, uh, things to change for the Q three budgets. Um, Vanessa, you did volunteer for making a write-up, um, I'm not sure. I see spreadsheets, yeah, that's the, the workgroup one, check. Um, I think I know most still from top of minds. But making sure I don't say the wrong thing, that, that would be great. Uh, let me quickly stop sharing and find it. Uh, so the, the, the first, uh, idea, I, I've got the MyRab. Uh, just a quick check, did you, oh, there's the minutes, perfect. Well, might as well screen share that then, um. Yeah, why not? There we go, um, um. Yeah, as you can see, uh, the, the link is also in chat, so if you're interested in checking out the MyRab board, you can. Um, a couple of suggestions, um, for Q three, um, since we are aiming to be on time this upcoming quarter, um, two dates popped up, one being, um, a deadline for submitting the quarter three budget being nineteenth of June. And this then still allows time for, um, yeah, for the consent process to take place before the actual start of the quarter. And that would be first, if we actually have the budget sorted out before the start of the quarter. Can you imagine? Um, additionally, it, it leads to, um, uh, one week before that, uh, just to make sure that, uh, internally, within all the workgroups, there's space for people to check out the budget, comment on it, have discussion, uh, figure it out, basically, in the broadest sense. Um, that would be somewhat softer and it, it's more like an internal, uh, deadline uh, for within the workgroups. And looking at the date, it's the fourth now, so this is next week already, be aware. Um, yeah, as you're all aware, there's a lot of discussions, uh, and, and the topic is almost constantly, uh, present of budgets. Um, but I do believe if we manage to get this one right, then we get to this actual quarterly, no catching up, we're just going as the calendar goes, kind of, uh, rhythm. Um, well, we'll get a, a reminder with a big red letters, uh, in the next couple of days. Designed by Guillermo. Um well, we'll get a a reminder with a big red letters uh in the next couple of days, designed by Guillermo, looking forward to that one. Uh so yeah, basically we'll properly remind everybody, because in in previous iterations, uh sometimes it was just too short notice for. Well, it did work out usually, but yeah, it's it's always good to have a bit more time. Um yeah, and an additional reminder, if you're linking to external documents, um. Please put at the top, put some some list of links, um because there were quite some proposals including. Information but in a link and then people just didn't see it. And then, yeah, if you get objections on your proposal. For missing information, which is actually included, yeah, that's not great. Um. Well, then there's a couple of topics to uh to discuss. Um looking at a a couple of topics, um it's a long list and the clock just ticked to nine o'clock my time. Top of the hour, so probably we won't be sorting out all of this. Um yeah, this is the the uh yeah, I'll just quickly cover some. Um for example, if we introduce a deadline of the nineteenth, uh do we enforce this? And if so, if a workgroup doesn't submit a budget by that deadline. What do we do? Like, do they refer back to their or default back, as it were, to their previous quarter budget? Um do they just not get any budget? Uh something else, question mark? And then there was discussion on um contingency, like uh unforeseen expenditures. If that somewhat translates correctly, um. Yeah, on a personal level, I feel that either all workgroups should have this or none should have it, uh just to make it reasonable. Uh otherwise, some groups look like they are requesting a ton of money or almost nothing and then. Yeah, I hope I'm somewhat clear and not my English breaking down, but. Um yeah, that's that's a discussion to to be had. And. Yeah, there was the notion that uh there's not a lot of room for um flexibility. So once the quarterly budget is approved, that's pretty much it. Like you cannot, let's say if after two months you realize, ah, I want to do this. Yeah, then you. If you didn't include a budget line for that, you just cannot do it and must wait for the next quarter. That's maybe not ideal. Should a budget be linked to a quarterly report and how? I think this is um on the previous quarter and reporting of it. Uh do correct me if I'm wrong. It's also, well, that's actually question five, like um do we have a mandatory um. Report on the previous quarter before you can have your next quarter's budget approved. Uh we're slowly moving there, but right now this is a suggestion to have included. Which, yeah, as everybody can sense, that's a a way up to having it mandatory at some point, but it's right now, it's a question mark, um. Should we do this for Q three? Um yeah, and then some more detailed questions on that topic, um. And how closely does a workgroup need to stick to its proposed budget? Does it need to be exact or just within the spirit of? So yeah, if anybody has any suggestions how to cover this during this current session, uh because it's 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 a lot in a way. Uh we did spend a full session on it, um resulting in looks like almost another full session of questions. So if anybody in the room has any thoughts or suggestions, I do see a ton of messages in chat, which I'm not up to date with. I'll read those, but anybody feel free to uh take the floor and and share your thoughts.
I'd just like to thank everybody very much for participating today. It was a very good meeting and informative. So thank you very much and thank you to the hosts.
Definitely agreed. I see Daffo arguing for a liquid one rather than a quarterly deadline. Um um. And you're absolutely right. Um in this outline, we would be expecting quarterly reports before the quarter is actually finished. Uh so that's. Yeah, that's the thing. I agree on that uh being with. Um. Well, the thing on on having um deadlines for the proposals is. In a, from my perspective at least, I can't speak for everybody, but still, um clarity and not constantly having. Non-stop budget discussions because we were quite a bit behind um with approval. We've tried to catch up and in my mind, uh looking at this nineteenth of the month. Of this month, we would be back on track and then it would simply be um, let's say, the last month of every quarter we would spend on budget discussion. Rather than twelve out of twelve months. Uh but that's, yeah, in a way, I'm I'm not strongly against um liquid. Um. Yeah, it's something to discuss, right? I mean. Not my call to make. But everybody's call to make. Any thoughts in the room or you'll just blast it away by this wall of text and feel like uh enough for now?
I think you got free, you're free to go, my friend. We have a a a good retrospective today at the Governance Workshop. I think um. That's why it was good, uh really. Mandatory. And a good opportunity for everyone to speak up on the what went well, what we need to improve, uh because that's that's a. Way to reach the best practice. Um. So yeah, that was a good chance for that. Uh. But still, I agree with that the red funds are gonna help to commit with the deadlines. And yeah, and committing them with them. And then the other thing, I think you mentioned that it's on document. It's called weekly on a a contingency. Um budget and. The discussion we have was. One, some workgroups will include it, some others won't. Some are some are precise while they're building some other, they they just would. Would like to have a contingency budget. The other way to take it, to go through it is to have a. What we're doing now, that is the budget for experiment, that is would be a global for the whole program. And if a workgroup. Needs or figured out that there is a need for a contingency budget to do specific. To be able to present this specific to the community and to find consensus. Um. And um and so this contingency will have. An argument presented before for the needs and the community will be able to approve it. If not, it would be um. If not, if if all the workgroups should have on a contingency, uh and that will increase the budget just for in case. So that will would not have too much sense, will be rational in terms of deliverables. Um so that's another way to to make a contingency part of the strategy for operations. Uh and to be able to consent the same way we process the whole quarter.
Thank you. And I I just want to point out uh on contingency, um. In this discussion, people have also considered a token price fluctuation. I ju- yeah, just for completeness sake, um we did agree on the treasury. Uh covering up to ten percent of of price fluctuation. Um so the, yeah, it's not really the same uh as contingency, but it's it's connected, so wanted to mention. Billy.
And I know everybody's, we're we're well past time and I apologize for keeping you here. Um but we started the meeting uh discussing the position at the Marketing Guild. And I'm wondering if we can't coordinate a meeting between the leads that are already in their respective positions. To determine the best way forward with that and we move. Expedi- expeditiously if we can, because. Uh I as I had mentioned in the chat and in different uh links on the Discord. Ben, Desdemona, Macy Gray, Macy Gray's cousin, and MC from Chicago. Did a live event last week. Um there were, at the most at any given time, there were twenty-two people in the chat. I didn't see anybody from ours. I didn't also see any notification that the event was taking place within our Discord. And this tells me that the need for marketing to be involved with this process. Is urgent, so if we could focus on doing something like that. Uh quickly, and I know that's uh that not exactly how things go all the time, but. But maybe we could figure out a way to do something about that. I I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, noted. Um as somebody did reply on Discord chat, uh it was in the social media channel, um but. Yeah, also agree that coverage could have been better, um yeah. Um. Alright, I see chat also. Winding down a bit, not fully still. Daffo is gonna start his monthly report, a quarterly report, actually. Uh I I mean, I mean, yeah. I'm not sure what the best avenue for this for continuing this discussion is, like we have another governance uh session next week, um. At the same time, it felt like something to scale up to a wider audience and have more input on. But that's a recurring uh theme, right? Um. Calling for asynchronous inputs. Yeah. Not always the most successful way of moving something forward. Let's let's put it like that. Um. Looking at the calendar, one decent slot for it would be, but I think it might just be governance next week. Yeah. That's true. Okay, then that's it for now. Final check on the room. Anybody wants to say something?
Just wanted to say thank you for one hundred town halls. Um you did a fantastic job. We had a lot of good times, had a lot of fun, learned a lot. Um this will be my last town hall here. So I just wanted to say thank you. For all the good times.
Yeah, I was gonna say, well, I miss you.
Uh I won't be completely gone from the ecosystem, but yeah, you'll see me in a reduced capacity, let's say it that way.
That's right.
But you guys are gonna keep going and I hope you're gonna make it to another hundred town halls.
That's it. We'll send you an invite for that one for sure. Always welcome, as you know. Alright, then that's a wrap. Onto the next hundred and um. Yeah, maybe before that's you and one of the many community calls we have uh going on. During the week. Thanks all for being here and sharing your time and stay awesome. Cheers.
Bye, everyone.